The Marketplace Expansion, Bay Street, Christie Avenue. Maru, this is your item, I guess.
Okay, this is the Marketplace Expansion. The commission may recall that this first came to you as a study session in January. At that time, it was still at a very conceptual stage. Since then, some refinement has been made, and that's why we are here to present those developments that they have done. If you might recall, that there were two main sites that were going to be redeveloped in Marketplace. There was what used to be called Zone One, which is right here. It's about a two-acre site, near the tracks. Here's the Marketplace building. And the second zone, or the site, was about an acre here opposite the Pinnacles Project and the PPP. These two sites have now been questioned. We are calling site here as Shellmount Building, and the site along Christie Avenue as 64th and Christie Avenue Building. I'm sure the names might change as this project goes along, but for now, that's what we are calling. The Shellmount Building, this building is going to be a mixed-use building. There's going to be retail on the ground floor with four levels of parking, and then on top of that, five levels of residential units. It's going to be about 165 to about 175 units, and the commercial portion or the retail portion is going to vary between 27,000 square feet to 50,000 square feet. The total height, it'll be nine stories, and the height would not exceed 95 feet. Another feature on this building is going to be the connection with the existing pedestrian bridge over the tracks. It will connect to the building, and then through the building, it'll connect to the plaza here.
Thank you.
The second building is the 64th and the Christie Avenue Building, which is right here. This is going to be, again, a mixed-use building with retail on the ground floor and residential on the top. It's going to be an eight-story building, but it stepped back, so in the front, it's going to be four feet, and it goes back to six, and then another eight at the back. As the elevations, it'll be more clear as what they're proposing. It's going to be about, let's see, up to 180 units, and the retail area is going to be 7,000 feet. Like I said, it's going to be eight stories, and the height will not exceed 90 feet. In addition to these two sites, there are going to be some site improvements within this area in order to sort of improve the circulation and connect the redeveloped sites as well. One is going to be the entry plaza around near opposite borders. It's going to be kind of a plaza for pedestrians as well, connecting, making these connections here. There's going to be a new pedestrian walkway connecting this site to the cinema site. And then again, this is the circulation right here. In terms of elevations, I'm going to leave it to the applicants to present those as a thing. They might have changed from what we have in our package, and plus, it'll be a formal flasher. Those would be much better than mine, anyway. So at this point, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer, or we can move on to the applicant's presentation.
Has staff thought through how this will be accomplished? The previous staff report mentioned a PUD. There, we're looking at the building height map tonight. I noticed that there's, especially in the Christie 64th section, there are building height issues.
We have been having conversations with the applicants in terms of actual, which part permits would be applicable. Applicable staff is recommending that both the sites be developed under a PUD, but there are some, applicants have some concerns regarding PUD. So it's something we haven't worked out yet, in terms of how this is going to all work out. Right now, we are just looking at what is being proposed in terms of development, in terms of uses, in terms of height, in terms of massing to a certain extent.
And a question that I have, as I was going through the staff report and remembering the previous iteration. In the previous iteration, the three phases were listed as demolition and surface parking, and then, you know, and then the other parking, and then finally, you know, beginning on Site Two, and then beginning on what's now the Shellmount Building, and then moving back over to the 64th and Christie Building once. And now, the phasing is talking about Phase One being the Shellmount Building, Phase Two being the 64th and Christie, and Phase Three being site improvement. Is the demolition as being the precursor to anything else still planned? Or is that at this point like just a kind of Phase Zero that gets the whole ball rolling? How does that fit in at this point?
The two buildings and the site improvements, they are not in phases. They are just components of the project. It's not, that's how I presented it. I'm not sure how the phasing is going to work, whether it's going to be still the same or not. Because in the last previous, the last staff report, there was an issue of while, how to replace the existing parking, and the applicant had some issues regarding the existing tenants and their parking obligations. And I'm going to leave it to Denise to sort of talk more about how, if the phasing has changed or not. So we'll have to hear from the applicant on that.
Any other questions to staff? Thanks, Maru. So it's applicant's turn.
Good evening.
You want to move that microphone back to you there? Oh, okay, you use the portable?
Yeah, go ahead. Since we last met. I'm Denise Pinkston. I'm with TMG Partners, and we're here tonight as the managing general partner of the two primary landowners that are presenting this application to you. Rockwood Christie LLC, which owns the 64th and Christie site, or most of it. A portion of it's owned by Marketplace, and the Marketplace Mortgage LLC, which is the ownership of the balance of the project site. Our company name, TMG Partners, and the way we like to work with communities suggests that we don't just come in with the developer's idea of how it ought to work and present that to you without having tried to do our best to develop partnership relationships with a lot of give and take between neighbors, other constituent groups, issues commissioners might raise, staff. And so really, my design team tonight, although you'll be hearing from my architects and my landscape architects, since we were last here to see you in January, my design team includes a lot of the people sitting in the audience tonight. People who live at the terraces, people who represent the Woodfin, people who represent Borders Books, the United Artists Theater, my equity partners and bankers, and all of those people, residents of PPP, who I don't think came tonight. I think, I can't, I think that's a good sign, but one person may be here. They have all been my partners to bring this to you tonight. And the application that you'll see before you represents a lot of input, not just from my designers, but from each one of those constituent groups, who all have a very important stakeholder position in the ultimate development of Marketplace, not just as a development isolated, but as a neighborhood in the city of Emeryville that needs to work at the end of the day for all of us. And so it's with that spirit that we bring the application to you tonight. A lot of my answers to why things are the way they are on the site plan might reflect discussions that we've had with a lot of those participants or stakeholders. The residents surrounding our site have been raised issues about view impacts and street walls, and wanting street walls in the proposed project, the two buildings that, two building sites to represent existing street walls. The city, we had a nice PowerPoint to show you, but we can't get it up and running to the form, so we'll present our PowerPoint off of this. Luckily, we brought you copies. The design team started this with several redevelopment goals. Primary one was to revitalize the Emery Bay Marketplace to create a thriving mixed-use residential and commercial neighborhood, not just a standalone development disconnected from its neighbors and from the rest of the city. A really important part of that goal is to improve pedestrian connections through the existing site and the adjoining neighbors, so that really, people feel welcome to walk and drive through the site in a way that they don't feel welcome today. And then finally, too, with our buildings, have a variety and interest in our architecture, thank you, that promotes the pedestrian experience and environmentally sound planning goals. If you take a look at the aerial of our site, you get a feeling for the problems that exist out there today, as if we weren't all fairly cognizant of them, but I thought I'd just review quickly some of the things we're trying to fix through this application. Obviously, we have a huge expansion of surface parking that's owned by Marketplace. Some of it's fairly isolated, and the parking itself isolates the major activity areas. So we have the United Artists Theater that people like to go to, the Borders Books and need at the public market, but in order to get to UA, they're walking through a parking lot through a wind tunnel, which is what we affectionately call that zone between the Marketplace Tower and the brick building here. The pedestrian connection is slightly off-center, and it is a little bit of a way to get to the UA. And you're going through a lot of surface parking that's not terribly interesting. The connection of the City Park to Christie Avenue and to Emeryville neighborhoods is hidden by a row of screen landscaping that was originally installed to screen the parking from view, but has the effect of screening the park from view, which presents safety problems at night, where it's hard to look into the park and provide 24 security from the sort of eyes-on-the-street perspective of having that park be a really good, active part of the neighborhood. Although PPP folks can see in it fairly directly from 30 stories up, it's not very well visible from ground plane. This surface parking area is a visually dominant arrival point in the site, so as you drive down from Bay Street or as you enter Emeryville from the Berkeley side, what you see is parking. And those are all problems with the site today that we would like to correct. The first thing that we started with when we looked at the site plan and after meeting with you and talking with the city and our neighbors on the first round, was to really think about how people should move through the site, rather than how they move through the site today. And we identified these circulation corridors as being the primarily important circulation ways through the site, and my landscape architect, David Gates, will present this in more detail in a moment. But the idea was to really get people wanting to walk from Bay Street through the project site to the UA and to other destinations across Christie Avenue in a safe crossing, through the City Park, and to other destinations on the site. Once we started with that concept, and then with the two building areas, the newly acquired 64th and Christie site, which we were able to buy with the assistance of the City Redevelopment Agency, and the area next to the Woodfin Hotel, we selected these two areas as the primary development sites for two reasons, having to do largely with our constituent interests, who are, some of whom are present in the room and some of whom are not, but who nevertheless find voice through me. The United Artists Theater and my office tenants and my tenants in the brick building are very much concerned about their visibility to off-site locations and to the convenience and ready availability of surface parking. And any project that I put forward needs to respect that concern that they have put forward. On the other hand, a lot of surface parking in this area is unattractive and prevents good linkage of land use to the City Park. So one of the proposals inherent in the initial offering is for this owner and this owner to cooperate to change the parcel boundaries of this site. And this application is also going to be for a lot line adjustment that will make this parcel thinner and longer and bring it down closer to the Christie Avenue Park to an alignment that precisely lines up with the driveway of the Pinnacles Project across the street, and allows us to create, in effect, a controlled intersection crossing that is a vast improvement in pedestrian safety to get people across Christie Avenue from residential destinations on this side of Christie to the commercial and retail offerings on the other side of Christie. And because these two owners are working in partnership, we've been able to strike a deal where they're willing to exchange land, if you will, in order to make this site longer and narrower. The other thing we're trying to accomplish down here is to limit the visible impact of surface parking. The way we accomplish that is by hiding it behind this building. Today, there's a one-line row of surface parking right here, or I guess it's on this side along the edge of UA, and it's too narrow to get a double-loaded row of parking. By making this site narrower through this land swap, which we're calling a lot line adjustment between the two property owners, you get a double row of parking, and you hide the surface stalls in an area where they're less visually impactful to the surrounding residential community, and you allow the parkage to widen here, so that really, the edge of the park comes and touches the intersection that brings people across the street. So the cooperation of these two landowners and input from these tenants have really shaped how this end of the site plan works, in an attempt to activate the park, create eyes on the street, and better connect people across Christie. Similarly, our constituents on this side of the site, primarily residents over here in the Woodfin Hotel, have helped us design and shape this building to respect view corridors from the terraces across the project site here, so the building massing is designed to lead you to the corner of PPP, about where my pen is. So the bay view in this, my hands on the rail. So the bay view in this zone remains uninterrupted for the most part, or at least until the rest of that stuff gets developed. And in partnership with Woodfin, we're working on what this edge should be and how it ought to function. Now, one of the benefits of having a cast of thousands on your team is that I think at the end of the day, the project will be much better for everybody. Of course, the disadvantage of that is that the planning process is much more iterative than is typical in a private development, and every time I change this driveway, I got to go talk to Dee, and then I got to go talk to the Woodfin people, I got to check with Borders. So that's my process, and it's led us to be here tonight. And that process will continue with your suggestions and input, and I think you asked a question of staff, how we're going to process this. Given the complexity and the number of stakeholders, we've decided to process it as a preliminary development plan, PUD, because a preliminary development plan allows us to lock down building pad zones, basic circulation systems, pedestrian circulation through the site, building height, building massing. And once that's clear, and everyone is in agreement that that's the right way to go, we'll come back with the next level of detail through final development plans, which will be architecture and detailed designs of these various spaces. So because of my, the particularities of this site, that's how we've chosen to process it. It also allows best cooperation between the two landowners, and I think at the end of the day, the whole will be greater than the sum of the parts. So with that, by way of introduction, I'd like to introduce David Gates, my landscape architect, to present the site plan and circulation, and then we'll follow on with Steve Buckholz from Heller Manus to present the Shellmount Building, and MVE Partners, Chek Tang and John Kosse to present the 64th and Christie Building.
Good evening, Dave Gates. I'll just walk quickly through the site aspects of this and what it is we think is going to make this a better place. The goal here is to create a legitimate mixed-use. Right now, it's a standalone, and I think the nice components of it, I'm sure you've all spent many hours there, work very well as a retail destination, and I think it needs residence. It needs a 24-hour life, you know, and to make it a real neighborhood, if we bring residential components in on these two pieces and reorganize the theater in a better way for the pedestrian, it starts to make it a legitimate neighborhood.
Excuse me. Over here.
Sorry.
The commissioners can't see your laser pointer because it doesn't show on their screens.
All right. Sorry about that. I was just leading you through the parts of it. Maybe I'll do this.
I didn't even realize you had a laser pointer going.
They're illegal in San Remo.
You could point with the laser pointer onto the overhead.
Well, this is, anyway, what we're trying to do is infuse life, energy, and vitality. And one of the ways we're doing that is to take the edges that are there now, and by bringing in the residential component, which will have retail at the base of it, it'll match the retail on the base of this side, and it'll, in fact, extend it. And then, working with Woodfin, we'll try to create some vitality along that, which is a difficult pedestrian corridor right now, so that this entire realm, then, from inside and on the edge here, becomes a Main Street, pleasant place to be, a wide enough sidewalk that there are outdoor eating facilities, and enough life and character to bring some character and community to it. The other component, then, residential, 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 is to, with a City Park in the center, is to finish off that node, if you will, widen the sidewalk and create a stronger connection across to the park, and let the park bring you in to this piece of the retail, and then strengthen already a connection here to the theater with another connection along the front of the retail and office to bring you in here. So it starts to reduce the scale, give life on those edges, and breathe people in there in the later hours. So what I'll do is I'll walk through each of those nodes, if you will, and explain, and this is still a diagram, I think that we're still in the process of designing this. But coming from the Woodfin area with the overcrossing sitting right here, is to create a wider sidewalk, a better pedestrian experience through restriping and reconfiguration. Create an outdoor arrival plaza, which will have the car, but there will be outdoor restaurant facilities in the Woodfin, a special edge really to the retail along the base. And the entire base of this side of the new facility will be retail, so each of these dots here would be a proposed entry, so that there will be an intent to create a life that matches the existing life on this side with a new facility here with, again, to pump in a little bit of activity at this spot. The Amtrak connection will be emphasized through a plaza that will really be sort of a terminus, if you will, to the pedestrian coming this direction, you know, from what Madison Marquette is doing to the south. There will be sort of a terminus to that with a major pedestrian crossing and a softening of the street element, and then a stairwell that will whisk you up to the Amtrak facility. Then there will be some drop-off components along this Main Street edge in this zone here. And then, to continue through in front of the office building and then through the center of this, you know, it'll also pull you across, then, with a continuation of this pedestrian way, which is just striped parking right now, and the retention of the pedestrian connection, which takes you through Denise's wind tunnel, to a reconfigured destination here at the theater with an emphasis on the architectural element here to sort of actually grab your attention and pull you to that point. And then it starts to make connections across to existing residential, and then down to the City Park, you know, which then works its way to Powell Street Plaza. With the last component, then, being the completion, really, of the residential node, as I would call it, with, as Denise pointed out, a better connection to the Powell Street Plaza, with a widened connector here, the parking will be pulled back, stronger emphasis to the park, and then again, these dots indicate a retail ground level, and then retail here plus fitness and sort of active zone, if you will, and then a widened sidewalk to collect users, both office and residential users, to pull them across and through at this point. So that reducing the scale, creating edges, creating logical pedestrian paths, and then creating vital uses at the ground level to give those paths life, character, and 24-hour use is where we're headed. I think these are just representative of the kinds of activities that can happen along these corridors, outdoor uses of different kinds indicative of what's already there now in the marketplace, only we'll extend it and pull it throughout. So I think the next components here will have the architects get into the particulars of each of their sites, a bit washed out graphically, but I think we'll start here with Steve. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Buckholz from Heller Manus Architects. So we're looking at the Shellmount Building, and I'll just turn right away to the ground floor plan of the building. We are looking at, we have looked at many retail designations for this site, and currently in all the schemes, we have retail on the front edge that mimics the Marketplace front edge on the other side. We've created a, both a pedestrian, main pedestrian crossing, as well as our vehicular entrance to the site, and we would see this as our, as our signalized, a very controlled intersection, the main drop-off point for the project and the main entry point. We also would create a secondary vehicular entry point on the other side. This also is where the terminus of the Amtrak overcrossing would come over our project and then come down and enter into this plaza, which then would take people safely across to the other side. This element is also a two-story retail area, and then we screen the parking all behind the retail, and then we step it back to the tower that happens above. Oh, the other point to mention is, on the Woodfin side of the project, we are respecting Woodfin and having our vehicular entrances be on the other side currently, so that they maintain their own identity and security.
The plans I have that we received in our packet are at least somewhat different, if not, to use the word substantially different, in the layout of the parking lot, the retail footprint, and...
That's what's been iterative.
That's my iterative point of introduction, which is that, you know, we gave these to you, or we gave them to staff probably six weeks ago.
Okay.
And in that intervening period, we've had a couple of meetings with the Woodfin, one of which was in San Diego with their corporate offices, and they said, move this, move that, we don't like this. So we've responded, and we didn't want to give you yesterday's news. We wanted to give you sort of what's hot off the presses. I think Dee still has, based on my conversation with him today, additional comments. We will do our best to resolve as many of these comments as we can prior to submitting the PDP, and the PDP language will include some generic language that will give us the opportunity to continue to be responsive as these kinds of concerns come up. I think everyone's trying to make sure it works, and the reason the garage entrance is relocated is that Woodfin doesn't want high-volume traffic, parking and loading, and the noise associated with that right next to where people are going to be sleeping. And they're concerned that if you put retail next to an operating hotel with surface parking, that the retail customer is going to see that surface parking and immediately head there and park there, rather than entering the garage as a matter of convenience. So they were highly concerned that we provide them with some secured parking in order to make sure that they had parking available for their customers when their customers need it. They are currently experiencing, we have sort of parking poaching problems on Marketplace, at least anecdotally we do, where people who go to Bay Street shopping at the north end of Bay Street are parking in the Woodfin lot rather than parking in the Bay Street lot. How many cars do that, I don't know. We know some number of people park in our lot and then walk over to the Amtrak station rather than park over there. Some people who work on the other side of the railroad tracks, who have to pay for parking, park in our lot instead and walk over. So we have a parking management control issue on the site generally, and this allows us to at least protect Woodfin from that problem, which is an important part of our ability to obtain their consent to the overall development scheme. So some of those changes can be explained that way.
In the plans that I have that center there at the major crossing, that was going to be a pedestrian-only access point.
Yes.
How do you intend, given that that is the connection directly to the railroad overcrossing, how are you going to separate the vehicle entrance from the pedestrian activity with people coming out of the garage on foot or by vehicle?
The thought is to have a really large plaza for people that takes up a good portion of the physical space in that location, so the vehicle crossing movements, and this diagram, it's a little hard to see, and to be honest with you, I haven't worked out all the details, but the first thought we had is, as we started getting into this with the Woodfin, you want people to cross where the signal is for safety reasons. That the speed and volumes there are only going to get bigger. If we did nothing, the speed and volumes would grow of the traffic on Shellmount. So you want people to cross where the signal is. You also want your left-hand turn movements to flow where the signal is. So when Woodfin asked us to move the location of the parking entrance from here elsewhere, they didn't so much care where we put it, we thought probably the safest way to do that would be to have the highest volume of cars and people go through the signalized intersection. And the thought is that this plaza is fairly substantial and feels safe and protected, and there's vehicular movement here, and we got to figure out how to make that crossing wide and safe enough that maybe we have to have a pullout for, I don't know, we're going to have to sort that out. In other words, this is part of the PDP concept, where this is the preliminary plan. The final development plan will have to locate the garage entrance, the plaza entrance, and those details will have to be fully designed and acceptable to you and the Woodfin and everybody else.
And your attempt there is to keep that retail to the south as large as possible. Is that a major anchor tenant that you want there, or is it intended to be subdivided?
This is a funny site. It's hard to demise it easily for retail. Retailers like squares. We have a triangle. So we're trying to get a big chunk of triangle to function for retail, and this is the largest chunk of that. If we, we also have garage efficiency problems to worry about, and as we went through an iteration of the garage design, the most efficient parking garage layout is essentially the one you see where it has two in-and-out points, double-loaded corridors. That allowed us, in this iteration, which doesn't show in the elevations that you have, to drop the garage by a floor. So the building, the garage is now a three-story, not a four-story garage. That will help some of the concerns of the residents of the Woodfin, who remain concerned about looking at a four-story garage from their project across the street. So some of this is still... So some of this is still in play. But these are obviously really important issues that we'll, we'll have to work out as we do the traffic study, which we haven't done yet. And we see what the volumes are and what the traffic engineers recommend in terms of how to move in and out of the garage.
I think that would be something we really want worked out at the preliminary stage before we would bless it
Sure.
forward on. Because I, there's potential conflicts there, as you know Denise, and it just, we need to have a good design.
And although I would save this for the end, I'd state the obvious here. Security is going to be something you're going to have to deal with at least until the reputation is built that it's pretty strong. Particularly with the, the overcrossing ending right there, so.
Yeah, the intent vis-à-vis security is to bring people in a well-lit, well-observed crossing. You can't see it in this drawing, but through here. So that there are, there's observation now that doesn't exist today.
Yeah, well, I was talking even more about
Auto theft and stuff, yeah.
Patrols, et cetera, just at least as you open up to get the reputation as, as having people there. So that, you know, problem doesn't, doesn't occur, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then the, that, as it comes across the tracks and then ultimately down the crossing, once it gets to the area of the garage, will it be going through the garage? Will it be going on a plaza over the garage?
It goes above on a plaza and then comes down either a stair or an elevator.
And we haven't gotten there yet.
We just haven't got there yet. But again, our idea is that, the big idea is that a signalized intersection is a safer way than just a pedestrian intersection. And that's one we have to still study. But that's where, that's what this idea is presenting.
Yeah, and this location down here was not good for a signal because it's too close to the signal that's, you know, 20, 30 feet down the road. So we always knew the signal would be in here. And initially, we were thinking it would be up here. And as we started really thinking about where people are going to move, this is the place to put it. So you want, you want your left-hand turns. And that being said, it may be, there may be ways of reducing the volume in and out of that entrance by encouraging people to get a quicker straight in, straight out in this entrance. So they use this more frequently, particularly when they come from this side of town. But that, you know, we'll have to get that designed with the traffic engineer as we go, go forward.
So to understand then the changes in the, in the paper plan to what you're now showing. You have two vehicle access points, one mid-block and one at the north end. With no garage access from the Woodfin's southern edge.
Right.
And how are you handling the, right, in the previous plans, you had all your trash and loading on the south edge as well. Where is that indicated for, for the retail function?
It'd be coming on the north side.
And what about for functioning for the retail, the larger, southern retailer area? You don't, you had a large loading bay next to Woodfin previously.
We're, we're going to need to work that out across to serve it from the, from the north side.
Within the garage itself?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, because we're not, we do have a loading turnout at the front at this location for this retail.
So they can do front loading like you do in a lot of
So Woodfin basically said, we don't want loading on the south edge.
Loading of cars, yeah.
That's understandable.
So. We still have those two possibilities for it.
And you're also working with AC Transit and any of this stuff?
We've, we've, we are aware of what they want and need. They, they are looking for a bus pullout in this zone. And the stacking for AC Transit vehicles, which currently occurs here is where they hold over. We're proposing that they hold over here, oops, sorry. They currently hold over in this zone. And we're proposing that they just pull their holdover around the block.
Okay.
So let's go to the second floor.
That was an exciting start to the plan. Okay, so going up to our typical residential level. And again, this is two stories of retail, so it is 20, 25-foot setback. We're looking at townhouses along the front here, a much lower scale. And you can see it also on this model, and we have some perspectives we'll show. And then a five-story tower that is shaped to respond to views from the terraces. As well as being an efficient residential tower. We have the center, the towers are split between two with bridging, connecting the two. Keeping the major Amtrak overcrossing and keeping it, what we would intend to have it be activated. So that that security element by having the residences there will increase. And it comes down into that plaza again, that then takes you safely across the
So we're on the fifth level here?
We are what?
On the fifth level?
Well, this would be the third through the fifth. So again, what we've discovered in our more efficient parking layout is that we've been able to drop a, a level of parking. So now there are only three levels. So now we'll have five levels of residential. So it's a total of an eight-story building versus a nine-story building. And this would be a typical floor plate that goes up from three to five. And there are minor setbacks on the corners and terraces and things like that. But in general, it's a two-story townhouse on the front and then a five-story main tower.
And the major decking on the southern edge, is that still on the third level or, or the fifth level? Or is that on the fourth level now?
Okay, on the southern edge, this would be then the third level. Or actually, let's see, if three levels of parking, that would be the fourth level, would be the terrace. And then this level is even one higher because that's coming across where the Amtrak comes across. And then it steps down as it goes through.
And that, and that would be accessible or?
Yes, it would all be accessible.
And it looks like those units open out onto these, this little terrace area.
Good.
Yeah. So we're, we're trying to create a courtyard element and have these interior units have a view as well as all, obviously all the extra. We have many corner units in, in the plan at this point. The roof plan just briefly does a very similar thing, showing that we have some green space on, in the courtyard. As well as opening up on a podium deck behind the, behind the townhouse units. The section is showing the change now from four levels of parking to, to just three levels of parking. With the residential being secured parking on the third level. And then the retail and the other marketplace retail being picked up on the first two levels. And I think of all the iterations we've done so far, is we've maximized the parking. So that's why the retail has changed many times. And then it shows also the connection of the Amtrak overcrossing coming across with a, a bridge and a stair connection, as well as in the ADA elevator connection.
So you're actually closer to the bridge elevation with this new cross-section than you were previously?
That's right.
Because I know there's steps and ramps.
Now it's coming across evenly. So that's working out better for us as well. Then why I brought this Axo view is we're really trying to show from the terraces how we've shaped our building to, to leave that view corridor. That Denise was mentioning earlier, between Woodfin and our building, that there's still a view corridor to the, to the bay. And the shape of the building is then responsive to the, the already centralized Amtrak overcrossing as well as that.
Very nice.
Did you have some montages? What kind of study did you do, do in working with the folks from the terraces to make sure that this was actually going to be an effective setback?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Substantial setback?
Yeah. We, Jeff Heller went out there and went to the units of several residents, although not everyone. Someone's here tonight who we didn't go, who's, to whose unit we did not go. But we took pictures from several locations on this side of the building and on this side of the building. And, and did a photo montage of that view impact corridor through here. When we prepare the final submittal to the city for processing, you'll have that information available to you. One resident requested tonight that we also go to her unit and do a similar exercise. So she can see how her views would be impacted and we can think about that some more. So we'll go ahead and do that as well. And that additional information will be available to you in the submittal package. You know, one thing about having so many stakeholders is that you can't make everybody 100% happy. But we, we're trying to make very good faith efforts to really listen and make accommodations where we can and still have a viable project. So that's what we've been trying to do.
And with our 3D model, we can actually take a look from a view and, and actually see what you see out there.
Oh.
So that is a possibility that we can do.
And you use that as, as, as a tool in defining the setback in the building?
You can just see exactly what we've got. And as Denise mentioned, you'll get to see what that view actually is from that unit. So that is a possibility. And then I just blow, we just have a blow up of the actual conceptual massing at this point. Just showing exterior terraces, obviously cladding the, the building. And then the lower townhouse units, and then we have the podium deck. It's also setting back and showing the relationship of the two-story retail off the front. Major plaza for the connection across. And again, another major setback from, from the front of this part of the building. And also responsive to Woodfin being a separation there too.
Now, what, what are your plans for the large deck areas? I mean, is this just a vacant space? Are we talking turf area or?
We haven't designed it yet, but it would be an activated space, so that would be a
A putting green.
Or bocce ball or something.
Some kind of active courtyard space. We haven't designed it yet, but another later thought we have too is that partly in response to just having a lot of massing of building here, we may cut away some of the roof deck here. So that there's less building edge to be looked at from off-site locations. So when you see this building now from that side, you'd actually see you would not see, you'd see some cars, but that would be screened with landscaping. But you'd have a softer edge. You wouldn't see the up to four-story mass before you hit the terrace. And then landscaping on top of that, you would, the building wall would stop somewhere between the third and the fourth floor. And it might have a trellis and it might have landscaping. And we're working on a variety of garage screen.
Something like that.
Yeah, something like this diagram here.
Cut back, so it wouldn't be a complete, you know.
It wouldn't be a straight-up wall, would have some variation.
Right.
And we're thinking, we've talked internally about various treatments for the garage since it's going to be visible to homeowners and to people staying at the terraces. And what we're, our current favorite idea is to try to do a green wall with a series of cables that would allow, and we'll work with David on this to make sure the green will actually grow on the wall.
On the parking.
But to, to screen the parking with plant materials. Because almost any building material you use there is going to have a hard edge. And whether it's a hard edge with little wire mesh in the coals so the pigeons don't sit in the wire hole. Whatever you do, it's going to look like a hard edge. So we, we thought we would try and soften it at the get-go with a green wall design for all or most of that elevation. Along with screening to address the other city concerns about not seeing headlights and not seeing internal, you know, lit parking lots and so forth. So again, those are issues that will come up in the FDP. But we're trying to think about them and anticipate them now. So that when people are asking questions about what's it really going to look like, we can give them some kind of visual idea of how the building would present when it's completed.
I'm, I'm real happy to hear that because that was, one of the questions that I was going to be asking was what, what have you thought about for the back edge of the parking along, along the tracks? Knowing that the residents on the other side would, would certainly be seeing it. And knowing how parking structures can be notoriously unpleasant to look at.
Yeah.
Chair Martin?
Yes.
Just a comment. This project, of course, will be subject to the new stormwater treatment measures. And you may recall the presentation you had recently from our consultants that are preparing guidelines on that. They took a couple of hypo, well, not hypothetical, but a couple of sites as case studies. And one of them was Site B at, at Bay Street. Which is pretty constrained as this site is. And they concluded, if I recall correctly, that the only real feasible solution for Site B was to do a green roof on the top of the parking structure. So that may be part of what this, these roof decks end up being as part of the stormwater treatment measures.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that was hinting, hinting at.
And would, and would that be more or less limited to the, the roof above the parking structure? That, that terrace deck area? Or would an intensive green roof also wind up being on top of the mid-rise towers?
This is less visible to off-site locations. There aren't many people who are up that high looking at the top of the roof. So it's not really usable green area. This would be usable courtyard area that would be landscaped and attractive. Whether we have to do it for stormwater detention, reasons or not, remains to be seen. But we're not proposing that as a, as a use area. So we're not currently thinking that this would be a green roof.
Though it, it might be really advantageous from the stormwater perspective. And, and certainly it would be visible, at least from the upper levels of PPP.
Yeah, and maybe with landscaping on some of the edges.
Yeah.
So I don't know, you know, the roof plan right now is just a roof plan. But all this is helpful for us to take into account at this early stage. It's great input.
I'm going to, again, depart a little bit from norm and just say that I'm extraordinarily impressed by this building. What you've done so far. I really like the articulation, I like the design thoughts, I like working with the people. This is, this has, this could become a very, very signature, Emeryville signature building if it's built outright. So I'm hoping you go that way.
Well, we now turn it over to our next architectural team.
Actually, and before, before we leave that, because there were some numbers that I had seen with that. As my fellow commissioners know, I'm always concerned about size of units and bedroom counts. And particularly, this project has been referred to as, you know, a neighborhood. And activating neighborhoods and such. And so for me, neighborhoods mean in part, at least families. And families mean larger units. And I noticed that out of approximately 165 units that were spec for here, there were six that were listed as three-bedroom. And that's something that, and actually, as we get to the 64th and Christie, there was not even a chart that indicated how many, so that will be a question of mine. But that's something that this commissioner is very unhappy with, very unhappy with.
Just to respond to that briefly. Yeah, our intent is through these townhouse units to create the possibility of family units where the units are larger and more flexible. Right now, they're, should be shown as two-bedroom units because that's, it's very hard to sell three-bedroom units, frankly. So we're trying to make sure the project works economically. But we have heard your concern and we know that that's an issue of the commission. And when we prepare the final submittal to you, we will have units that are sufficiently flexible to accommodate families.
Denise, before we leave that site, two questions I had. These plans don't seem to be quite as ambitious as the previous study session. There was a deck garage that wrapped around the backside of Woodfin with access under Powell. Which were some other options for getting people into the garage anyway. What happened to that? And
Couple of things. One is that Woodfin didn't like it.
Okay.
You know, so it was an easy one to remove. Because for the most part, the customers that, that I'm obligated to serve as their, you know, managing general partner, I'm supposed to protect the rights of Borders and UA and everybody else. Their clients mostly park in the areas that are easy to get to. Very few of our current tenants park behind the Woodfin. The Woodfin doesn't want my future tenants to park behind the Woodfin. So as the developer of a new building, to put a bunch of parking in a place where they don't want my cars to be, doesn't make much sense either for me or for them. So for those two reasons, we removed the deck. Now, that being said, I know the city has got larger traffic issues and concerns about how to get traffic in this entire area of Emeryville to work. And that one of the thoughts that Madison is looking at is to widen the Powell Street Bridge and create, you know, like almost a T-intersection here that allows traffic to make right-hand and left-hand turns off the deck into parking structures. Nothing that we do would preclude that as a possibility. But it, it is not part of our project. And that would have to go through a lot of other processing. I can hear some hissing and noise in the back already. So you, there's a lot of other people in the room that, that have to be a part of that decision. And so far, no one thinks that's such a great idea on, among the group of people that I've been involved with today. That being said, we invite a whole other group to participate in the planning process when we submit with you. And there'll be traffic consultants and other interests that will present themselves. So that'll be an issue we talk about some more, I'm sure.
And then the other question I had, the east edge of that complex, it looks like there's width for vehicle access. But I'm assuming that that, the intent back there and even behind the building, on the east side of the building, is the intent to land, well, not behind, behind Windfin, behind?
Behind here?
Yeah.
It's pretty close to the railroad track right of way.
Is the, but is the intent to landscape that area through there?
Yeah, or have this green wall on the garage. That there would be some landscape screen to the garage. Exactly how much width we need in order to accomplish a meaningful planting area is something that David will tell us as we get into the final development plan for the building. To make sure that the planting area is wide enough to actually allow things to grow that will grow up and hide the garage and cover it with a green screen.
Right, okay. Those are my questions.
Okay, one other thing just to point out to you. You know, I think when we were here last, we said, well, we could, you know, put something here, put something. We had a lot of what-ifs. We can try to get rid of the what-ifs. There's still a few outstanding ones, obviously. And one of them is
Oh, thank you.
I'm still irritated by this corner as a planner because it's just parking. And this we own, it's, oh, I'm sorry, this corner right here. So it's across Shellmount Way. It's across from the Woodfin. It's a, it's a premier visual location from so many places. We've left it as parking because we kind of didn't know what to do with it. It, it's hard to park it per se. But I think in the final application, we'll show splitting some of the mass of this pad. So you have a smaller pad here and another pad there to create more destinations along that traffic, travel path that aren't surface cars. So I think we've made the decision that that could be a viable location and that we'll come back.
Is there room to fit a wider sidewalk on that side as well? That sidewalk with utility boxes right at the intersection is just a few feet wide. And I know it's tight with the parking through there, but that, it's really problematic.
Sure.
Physically getting around that corner, the northwest corner.
David, let's go walk it and think that through a little more. Okay. So, Chek or John?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name's Chek Tang with MVE Architects. I think David has set a really nice framework for the urban design of the project overall. And the way we proceeded with the design of the 64th and Christie block is really looking at this as a classic infill block and hopefully in time that will slowly kind of fill out the, the edge of Christie. And also perhaps, you know, in the marketplace itself that, that begins to get built up. But I think that the framework is there for us to, to really do a nice job in, in kind of filling out the block. I think on, on our block specifically, I think a couple of intentions that we have, design intentions that we have. The first one is being, again, along with the pinnacle project with BRE on the other side of the street, that we have opportunity here to begin to complete the whole experience of Christie, at least on that corner, and establish kind of a new, kind of a street section and a street calming kind of a feel along Christie. The other thing that on, I think on the flip side is on the marketplace side, that, that building starts to establish kind of edge to the marketplace, which is more urban, creating a more urban edge on the marketplace side. And then I think that one of the very important things is even though we are not on the front row against, against the freeway, what happened is with the second tier of this block, actually is a very visible sight to the, to, not only to the freeway as people driving around the fre, driving down the, up and down freeway, but also as you come across the Bay Bridge, that it becomes a very visible sight just at any other buildings along this front row. As we get, it's a little tough to see here, but as we get down to the specific kind of site planning issues, we've actually learned a lot of lessons and kind of input from the PPP community as well as from, from the planning commission in regards to some of the pedestrian safety as well as traffic issues that is specific to this area. The first thing that we keep hearing over and over again was the buses that parks alongside the park, in front of the park. That was a big kind of a nuisance to the PPP folks, I, I would imagine for the, as a nuisance for the future residents here. One of the intent we have is, in terms of the overall planning, is to allow these buses to kind of stand by along the, the northern edge of the theater so that they can actually park along there to really create a much more pedestrian kind of edge, especially with David kind of extending the park edge along the front of the Christie that would really get rid of the buses to, to a lesser place. The other thing is like Denise has alluded to earlier, the kind of alignment of the intersection between the BRE project as well as this project to create a much, much better alignment, not only as vehicular circulation, but also pedestrian crosswalk at that point for pedestrian safety. The other thing that you see as part of this proposal that we're also changing the street section, the bulbous and the parallel parking along Christie and on 64th to begin to establish kind of a street section on both streets. And that was part of the traffic calming device that, that we had proposed for the BRE project and hopefully we can continue with that on this project as well. And one of the things that I thought was very important, and I think the staff has recommended very strongly that retail presence on Christie is very important and also the retail presence facing onto the park is, is also very important for the project. And so as you can see that we have retail, about 7,000 square foot retail facing the park and then kind of a gallery space along the front of Christie leading to our residential lobby here, which also has relationship with the lobby of the, or the access point to the courtyard of the, the BRE project across the street. And then another anchor piece on the corner, which might be a common space or small kind of amenity, kind of a building amenities on that corner. The vehicular access to where it works is, we know that there was a lot of concerns about having access point on Christie. So one of the things that we have done is really allowing only the parking right here for the retail to be able to have a right and right-out conditions at that point onto Christie. The rest of the parking for the residential is accessed off of 64th here, coming in at this point into a, actually a non-gated area for resident, guest parking spaces. So cars can actually stack within the parking garage itself before you enter into a gated area and proceed onto the assigned parking garage level, which is one level on this level and then going up another level to the, to the second level of the garage. The, the building itself, like I, I mentioned earlier, I think is a very iconic location. And yes, we are proposing this building to go up to the 85-foot and then with the penthouse level, up to the 95-foot level as a maximum height. What we are trying to do is, I, we believe that this building actually has two separate scale. One is relating to the building across the street. And then another one is, I think, respecting kind of the, what we call the kind of profile, the skyline profile, scale. And so what we've done in the process is creating a four-story, a combination of a four-story and eight-story conditions here on the, on the Christie frontage, so that it respects the BRE projects across the street with a, a major setback of about 30 feet to the step-back of this component of the building here. The other thing that we thought was very important in terms of massing was to, not to create a, a really hard wall in terms of the visibility of the freeway, that we've kind of broken up the building in the sense having one piece of the building broken up is a, a much more vertical piece and then another one that kind of creates a U-shaped building so that as you come through across the Bay Bridge, this building actually responds in a, a varieties of scale. The other thing that we have is, knowing that the PPP is across the street from us, that we need to somehow articulate the roof area as well as the courtyard area. So the, on the podium deck on top of the two-level garage, these areas right here, here, and even the setback area on top of the terraces, these are all landscape areas. So as you look down, view down from the PPP tower, that, you know, it's not as much roof area, that these are articulated landscape area. As we move up to the roof level, one of the things that we thought was very important was both for the skyline as well as for the, the kind of articulation of the building, that to have varying heights in the roof and also different kind of varieties of roof shape for, for the purpose of kind of the, kind of the icon viewing from the freeway, that this building, this portion of the building is actually eight stories. And this U-shaped building here is four-story along the front edge on Christie, but it actually comes up to a seven-story. So there's actually differentiation for building heights within these kind of two different building components. In addition to that, the, the tops of these buildings, what we like to do is propose, and you know, what we've masked out in the model is just kind of a conceptual notion, but to create some roof shape similar to the Emory loft project, it became kind of a visual icon from, from the distance. And I think that was a very successful kind of move on the architect's part and we would like to do some similar kind of a gesture to, to relate to the skyline. And then finally, just to give you a sense of the, the scale of the building, that the section here is actually a section cutting across the building, showing the four-story conditions up on the front, which is the, the Christie edge. And it's, and it steps back substantially to kind of the, the second tier of the layering and then up to the eight-story conditions. And you can see on the top section, it's kind of a section longitudinal through the building, that this is a U-shaped building, which is a seven-story with kind of a loft conditions. And then this is the full eight-story building on the, on the corner of 64th and Christie.
Before you, before you leave that section there? I'm looking at the, the paper plans. Section B, I see you've got two-story retail on the frontage. Is that, is that frontage on Christie or is that the entrance to the parking area there?
That's actually part of the frontage, is kind of cut through that gallery space that I was mentioning.
Okay. So it's actually fronting on Christie, the two-story space?
Fronting on Christie, right. And so the way we looked at that space, it could be a, a serious kind of historical graphics or arts that, that could be displayed along that edge. It could be almost kind of a public arts gallery along that edge.
To create like an atrium, a two-story atrium space, okay.
Right, because the garage doesn't have enough, you know, it's, it's got additional room up in the garage level, so we can take that height all the way up to the second floor of the garage.
And that is how wide approximately?
That one, that area is about 10 feet wide. And I think one of the, the issues that came up kind of repeatedly tonight and I think in previous hearing was the, the garage act, you know, kind of the garage edges. One of the things that's interesting is that on the, if I can go back to the site plan for a moment, that these obviously are garage edges, but the way we are going to propose to, to treat those garage edges will, will not be a kind of exposed garage slab. We want to integrate that as very much part of the elevations of the building. And specifically, the reason why we, we did that is the theater actually asked or, or requested us to kind of show the garage as a garage because otherwise their, their, you know, their, their customer won't be able to know where to park essentially if they were to come into the gar, or come into the garage. So that was one of, or, or the retail people won't be able to know how to get into the garage once they get to that point. So we kind of left that exposed without any screening on that side.
Now, before you leave that plan, the access off of Christie, I see you've got parallel parking and perpendicular parking on the south side of the building there. Is that going to be problematic for flow in and out of the, the area? And I assume you'll look at that in detail with the traffic circulation?
We've actually corrected that since we did this. This is a photograph off the model. Model's probably two or three months old now. So in that, again, we're kind of dialing down in these little problem areas. And the current traffic plan for that location shows this, shows no parking here at all and a circulation zone just in here. So you have to come all the way to here to even get into that parking. It allows much smoother stacking and circulation into the project.
And we'll still get extra width on the north end of the park there?
You won't get as much width as a consequence on the north end of the park, so what we've done is we've added more width down here.
Okay.
So that when you are, as a walker, cross the street, you feel like you hit the park here.
Okay.
So.
Thanks Denise.
And with that, I'll turn it back to Denise.
I think we're pretty much done. We have this model, which we're happy to show to people, or maybe if people want to take a break and look at the model, that would be fine, however you want to handle that. And then I just left these graphics here to facilitate discussing the project. I guess the other thing we stuck in here for your information was what we thought the schedule would be. We're aiming for a July submittal of the preliminary development plan. We anticipate having our final approvals from the woodfin and our other project tenants in 2005 while the preliminary development plan is being processed. That we would submit final development plans possibly in late 2005 or 2006. And this project is a redevelopment agency project. We currently have an OPA which needs to be amended to update, to incorporate these plans. And construction could begin in 2006, 2007. Currently, we're attempting to have a phasing plan that has a preliminary development plan layer in place that has sufficient amount of detail for the commissioners and, and us to feel comfortable that various pieces of it could move ahead without having a particular phasing plan envisioned. So right now, we're not, we're trying to allow this and this to move independently. We don't know which one would go first today. And also to allow these pad sites to move independently, our thinking is that the first round of improvements would be to the pedestrian realms and obviously moving this entry drive in order to consolidate this as a building pad site. That the parking, when this comes down for construction, that there'll be a certain amount of surface parking available here. The retail would be built last, the garage would be the first thing built. So there'd be a certain amount of surface parking here. And that the office tenants of the project would be valet parked for the duration of construction in some of the locations on the site that are less heavily utilized. And that once this garage is open and operational, which we think takes eight to 12 months, I'm sorry, during that valet period, all of the near-in parking, these areas here, these areas here would be striped for retail or short-term parking, three, four-hour parking, unless you had a parking sticker, some sort of validation. And we'd have a certain number, a limited number of all-day parkers that would be allowed in these zones so that Borders and the public market, which comes pretty close to filling that lot by about two-thirds full during peak periods, you know, Monday through Friday lunchtime, they have a place to go that's available to them at noon. And what happens today is this parking is all full by 9:00 AM. So we're trying to shift the office guys off into the other parts of the site that are less heavily utilized. We are doing parking utilization surveys to figure out how many stalls on an average day are empty. So far, than the three days we've tested, we have a minimum number of 200 empty stalls on any given day during the times that they've been out there counting parking. Now, most of those empty stalls are in areas that people don't even know are mine. You know, they're way out here, they're out by UA, they're down in this zone. So we have some mo, room to move cars around during construction, but we're trying to make it phase independently of any one particular project component so that.
Good.
You know, it doesn't matter so much.
Who's your traffic consultant?
We have been working with Watree. We've talked preliminarily to Fair and Pierce, but we would like to, maybe tomorrow or Monday, pay you guys the deposit to file the application, depending on the outcome of tonight's meeting and the feedback we get from you and from the public, see how close we are to a submittal and have Fair, Pierce get involved on behalf of the city with really reviewing our traffic circulation so that we don't have two different traffic consultants.
Okay.
You know, we were relying on the city's consultant to really make sure that we've done our job.
Okay. Thanks.
And in summary, it's what we're trying to get to, is a coordinated neighborhood that links this part of Emeryville better than it is today to the larger Emeryville community. And there's our boring logo.
Questions with Denise?
Well, one question comment. As you were talking about all of the parking, a particular area of the parking that is at this point existing parking and doesn't seem to be addressed in any of the outdoor improvements, but that I would like to comment on as a result of an experience I have with the General Plan Update Steering Committee. We were all assigned various places to walk at some point, some number of months ago. And the assignment I had included predominantly Shellmount. And as I was walking north along that, that kind of diagonal strip there, right, exactly, right there. The parking stalls go right up to a sidewalk that, you know, and then to the road and, and no landscaping at.
Or here.
On, on the west side of, as you're going, yeah, so it, you can't see where I'm pointing. But the parking lot that's actually associated with the marketplace, so in other words, it's the west side as you're going, as you're going north. And what my experience was, was not only was it not particularly pleasant, but that it was also, whether it's that the stalls are too short or whether it's because there's no barrier landscaping or whatever there, there were many cars that were parked fully into their stalls and thus hanging over onto the sidewalk, including a van that had like a, an elongated rear part behind its axle that literally was two-thirds of the way across. I mean, and he was like legally parked in his spot and his tires were about touching the curb and his extended back area literally blocked two-thirds at least.
So that's this sidewalk out here, right on Shellmount and this?
Right, right on, right on Shellmount, across the street from where your Shellmount building is proposed. And, you know, and I understand that your, your proposal is to keep that a surface area, but I think what I'm suggesting there is maybe some kind of a landscape barrier so that cars don't wind up pulling across the sidewalk inadvertently, without even necessarily knowing that they're doing it. so that cars don't wind up pulling across the sidewalk inadvertently, without even necessarily knowing that they're doing it.
I have. Are we going, did we want to take a break or just push through this and get this wrapped up?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, should we hear from?
No, I know, I'd like to, I'd like to bring up just one important thing. I'd like you to pull two slides for me, please. This one, and then the representative outline of the 64th building. You lost them, huh? Okay. Now, this, the the blow-up one, that one, and then the one that, the corresponding one for the 64th. Yep, that's it. Okay. Take a look at that building, and I I made my comments about it. I'll keep it brief because I know Jim wants to get to the public. Okay, let's go to the 64th. If you take a look at that building, even compared to the Shellmount building, but even compared to the buildings to the west, the lack of articulation is astounding. And I I think that the experience at the sidewalk level of this massive block that is there, and I know this is preliminary, but I'm I'm letting you know that the lack of articulation here was an absolute deal killer for me. It is, it, this is, this would represent a a massive wall to anybody on the sidewalk. Okay, that's all I want to say.
Thanks, Joe. Any more questions for Denise before we?
Well, yeah, I have another, I I mentioned this at our last, at the first study session, and I know this is a work in progress. And the focus is on a lot of the pedestrian ways, more internal to the development. But I would like to see a nice green edge continue along Shellmount. So the the frontage that that, you know, continues north on Shellmount up to the theater site.
On the west side of?
On the west side.
Which is what Ed was talking about.
Yeah, and that would alleviate, that would alleviate my problem because it would then be be the barrier that would prevent cars from, you know, having their their rear end or front, usually rear ends draping over the sidewalk. On on, one of the things that I had read speaking of the pedestrian walkways through the site, one of the, there was a reference to palm-lined sidewalks. And on behalf of Commissioner Owens, who's not here tonight, I think she would be cringing at the idea of a whole palm line, yes.
No more palms.
Chris did not cringe when Pinnacle's proposed palms along the frontage, if you remember.
Are you sure?
No, in fact, I asked her pointedly. She was, had to recuse herself, and I had her come up to the microphone. So, I'm not sure.
Maybe she's mellow.
Right.
But yes, I I think Commissioner Owens has an idea that there are plenty enough palms in this city.
Right.
You know, I'd also just like to follow up on on Joe's concerns about the massing of the buildings at this point. And and, you know, these are conceptual studies, and I don't know what the architect has envisioned for this. But sometimes, even if you have more of like a solid wall with less articulation, if you're opening it up with a lot of glass, and I don't know, you know, a concept of a lot of windows and openness. That could help to soften that solid wall that that is of a concern to you.
Yeah, and and I agree. It's the lack of articulation, it's the antithesis of the Shellmount building.
Exactly.
And that's really what my concern is. The massing, of course, you have issues with that close to the, well, I'm not going to get into it, but you're right.
But but I think that, you know, but I think that's a really good point for the the design team to keep in mind. But I would sort of like to see something where there is difference between, you know, that the buildings aren't echoes of each other, that there is some distinctiveness about them. And that that concern is handled through design means like materials and glass, that type of thing.
Yeah, we, we're hoping to get into the architectural detailing in the final development plan, but we can certainly lay out some concepts now for you to take a look at and get us feedback on.
Input from the public. Is there anyone here tonight that wanted to comment on what you've sat patiently through here?
Always willing to sit patiently. I'm Cindy True Love. I live at the terraces and I'm the president of the Homeowners Association. I think it's remarkable, the collaboration we've had from TMG, and I want to point that out. I think you can see by the drawings how they've changed. It's it's really quite remarkable. Twice Denise has been to our homeowners association meetings, Jeffrey Heller as well has been, and at least twice they have come to help build the Montages that you'll eventually see. So, you know, I think it's, it's, we often, you know, denounce developers for not listening to the public, but I think it's really important to say when we have great working relationships. And we're we're very happy about the collaboration we've had thus far, and the only thing we'd say is that we hope this marks the way that we'll live together throughout the whole project. And we would like to continue to be involved as well as through that whole corridor as we look at the North Bay Street expansion, Marketplace expansion, improving Powell Street and the security there. So you can count on us to be players and and participate. So thanks very much.
Thanks, Cindy. Do you want to sign in for us, please? Anyone else wanting to comment tonight? So let's go back to, any other commissioner comments or questions?
Just real quickly to finish it off, I just want to reiterate my concern about security. That's a a key issue for me. And again, I just want to say the Shellmount building is is, to me, just exquisite.
Murray, did you want to make any comments?
Don't comment.
Okay. Ed, were you finished with your comment?
I think largely, but I I also definitely want to echo Joe's comments about the Shellmount. It's exciting. The Shellmount building is very exciting. And and I'm really happy to hear how, because I remember when the, when it was first coming forward and there were the options with the tower or the two mid-rises. And there was significant concern from the terraces and from other, but particularly from the terraces. And I am so happy to hear that through a spirit of cooperation and understanding, you know, things that we're going to have. A project that is a real win-win situation, it seems like. Well, now we need to get some more bedrooms in, you know, in in all of those. And the reason why I say that, you know, and, you know, and people sometimes laugh, and and I hear your comment of that they are harder to sell. And I know that, you know, we have a market right now, but we have a market right now. We have buildings that are being proposed that will be there for eighty, ninety, a hundred years. There is no way to know what the market is going to be in eighty, ninety, a hundred years, let alone 10 years. And if you put a building up that's going to last eighty or ninety years and is limited to studios and one bedrooms and a few two bedrooms, you're locking that out for that length of time. And so you're precluding the market for generations to come. And whereas if you if you put them in, they may be a little bit more difficult to sell or whatever, but eventually they they will sell and then they will be in the, there for future use.
Patty, did you have some more comments?
I just want to thank you all. You've really heard the commission and the residents, and I think you're moving in the right direction. And I I really appreciate the work that's gone into looking at pedestrian movement through the development and enhancing that experience, because it is pretty bleak down there right now.
Thanks, Patty. My turn. I I think overall it's exciting to see the activation that's going to happen here. And I like some of the changes that you've made. I appreciate the responses, responsiveness, especially with regard to the concerns of the terrace community. I'm I'm very concerned about mixing the pedestrian and the vehicle access into that Shellmount building. I think it's, my immediate reaction was a disappointment. I saw that as a really exciting opportunity to create a hub right there, linking with the bridge. And now to throw the major vehicle access into the heart of what would otherwise been a pedestrian-oriented experience, I think is is at least problematic, if not disappointing. I, actually, if you could go back to the, I think the fifth floor plan, my concern also, I freak, I use this bridge all the time. Unfortunately, it's used as a urinal more than a lot of other things. And Joe's pointed out the issue of safety. And it's critical that that connection be as open, unobstructed, and continuous as possible. I was glad to see the elevation change in your shifted plan where you have a grade from the bridge that is less of a, basically what would become a urinal for people coming across that bridge into that closed courtyard space. Any, and you had an elevator that extended in there and created a hidden area. It it's just, it's, your previous plan also had no units opening directly into that corridor. It was a enclosed three-level drop down to the street level. You've put units on there, which is one of the recommendations I was going to make looking at your older plans. You're improving on the elevation. I'm concerned when you continue down that, those terraces, that it's going to be critical that that be as open as possible. As police are going by, as most of the activity down on the street level moves along Shellmount. It's important for people to be able to see up into that connection so that it feels safe at night, so they can get across that point. I think in the earlier plan, you actually had retail that pulled back into that corridor, which I thought was an exciting idea. You've removed all the retail from those upper levels through that corridor, which I think is, I have mixed feelings. You know, nighttime, you've got, if you've got the residential units opening there, that actually might be better. But it's just really important that that be as wide as possible, especially the the mouth, the west end. And I'm not sure, you obviously haven't worked out how this landing is going to fit, because right now you're dropping right into the entrance, the vehicle entrance into the garage. And does that mean your retail is going to obstruct the opening? That your ground level retail right now actually obstructs that opening up there? So it's something you're going to have to look through and make sure that is open, that you don't have places for people to hide. Because it it will become a gauntlet and something that unfortunately is is misused, as the elevator system is being misused right now. I'm curi-, I'm wondering if you can get more of these units to actually open into that corridor, to 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 create a broader corridor and have more of your units facing, at least the doorway facing into the the connection itself so that those residents take ownership for that corridor. And it almost feels like, you know, almost a private space that you're going through and hopefully will respect. And that the future residents there will demand policing and surveillance. I'm also concerned about the east edge of this building, and there needs to be enough room to plant that space. As those of us who live in the northeast part of town move over that bridge, this is the wall that we're going to be seeing, and it's a large wall. People who live in the terraces are also going to be seeing that wall. And I'm concerned that you don't have enough planting area, even with your suggestion of using vines and a a wall fence, that you won't be able to address the 95-foot height, which is a big change for this location. The west side of the terraces actually has a great strip of landscaping, and eventually it will help to screen that catacomb at the lower level and improve that experience that everybody moving down through the train corridor will have as they pass through Emeryville. It's important that that wall really be treated well. I think if if I understand the circulation issues and the concerns of the the hotel and Woodfin. I I'm, part of me would like to have explored anyway, a separate vehicle entrance into the garage rather than mixing the pedestrian and the vehicle entrance. I, my gut feeling is that's just a mistake.
Can we, do you mind if we chat about it just a second?
No, not at all.
You know, this change, frankly, we would see.
Could we, could we get into into the mic because it is going out over TV?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. We went to San Diego two weeks ago and based on that meeting changed this plan, so there's obviously a lot of details left to be thought through. The primary driver of this garage configuration, there were two. Woodfin didn't want the in-and-out traffic here. Although one option is to separate and have the residential traffic move through here, so there's a smaller volume going in and out of here. This would be re, whatever, wherever that entrance is would be retail only. There might be a residential entrance, which would require me to go back to Woodfin and, you know, go through that round again with them. But that's one possibility is to separate that. The problem is then we get two ramps in the garage. It's less efficient, you know. Right now, it doesn't lay out, and then the garage has to get a floor taller to accommodate the same stall count with two ramps. So we dropped it. We got rid of the two, the dual entrance and the speed ramp for the residential. The result is less garage for the guys on the other side of the railroad track to look at, which seemed to us to be a good enough benefit to eliminate the the separate access for the different use types. The other issue is the signal. You know, I personally always feel safer crossing with a signal. I I think that especially for older people or people with children, as this becomes increasingly a shopping street, it is much safer for pedestrians to cross with the signal. I live near the top of Solano Avenue in Berkeley, and people rip down that thing going 40 miles an hour. And if you don't cross at the signal, you, you know, you endanger your kids who can't move as fast as you can out of the, out of in front of the wheels of a moving car. So that we have to, I'm pretty sure there's a signal in here somewhere. This is too close. This feels kind of right because you want the people that come close to the entrance of Borders and Public Market on this side. We could move the signal, but the signal's going to also control where most of the left-hand turn movements get made. So you want your garage to be where you're signaling, so any feedback you have, and there won't be two, because this this is too small of an area to have two controlled areas or you'll have, you'll create stacking problems down both directions on Shellmount. So I know you're a planner, or I think you are, and do you have any thoughts about really how to struggle with that issue? Because if you're going to move the people and the cars with the signal, it means that they're in the same neighborhood.
Right.
And so make, the thought with this, and it's not very well illustrated here, is that you get the signal in the middle so that the turn movements are happening in the middle of the street, the left-hand turn movements are out there. And then you have two really big crosswalks for people to move in that have special paving, you know, that that look really controlled. It's not sort of an incidental stripe that you cross with. Now, this is not a very wide street, so you do, pedestrians do cross it pretty quickly. Because it's really only two lanes of traffic plus a turn pocket. I think there's a left turn pocket down here. But but anyway, those are our thoughts. So what do you think about that? Because really, that's an important design detail for all of us.
What about if you, and I don't know, again, this is contingent upon the signal, but what about if you just push the garage entrance farther to the north?
We could do that.
And, you know, you know, see how it sort of turns here and 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 you just sort of wrap it that way, and you still have your main promenade for the pedestrian. There's a visual access and the pedestrian access, and you just move the garage entrance farther north, and it can sort of wrap around, you know, like maybe.
So how would you, so someone coming from the north?
Yeah, but that's the problem.
How do you get into the garage? How do you, where do you stack? How do you make that left-hand turn movement? Do you make it, do you make it across traffic uncontrolled?
Yeah, you're going to have less room.
If this is the signal for people and the car stops here, wait, 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 people cross, you accelerate out. You're not going to stop again for the guy who's making the left-hand turn, maybe. I mean, maybe it's something we take up with Fair Peers. We have a workstation with Fair Peers.
We knew at the start of this that the circulation in that particular area was going to be tough, right? And it's not, it's, there's just a lot of variables, and you're going to have to work with your traffic consultant and circulation consultant to do the, do the best. You know pretty much what we're concerned about, and Jim particularly about the safety of the pedestrians that are are in, mixed in with the cars. So that's our our key point right there.
All right, so we'll take that away.
Just fiddle with it and see.
Maybe, you know, something that just, and here in this discussion, an idea that comes to mind is just maybe make that whole zone area, you know, pretty much elongated with the idea you were talking about, you know, wide crosswalks and, you know, and getting it so that there's at least some kind of a separation but that it's still close enough in in the area. I don't know, I mean, I'm not a traffic planner, but.
You don't have to design it, that's our job, but I just wanted to pick your brains a little more.
Well, yeah, I think it almost has. Well, yeah, I think it almost has to be somewhat separated, pulled apart, if it's going to work without the conflict, so that's the, that's the design challenge.
Right.
The other thought was, again, we'd all like this just to be a pedestrian-only.
Mm-hmm, oh, absolutely.
So then this intersection would then be the controlled intersection, but then you'd still want a controlled pedestrian crossing, so that's where we get into that. They have a similar mid-block pedestrian crossing at Bancroft and Telegraph, where you got thousands of students going across. Maybe, maybe that distance isn't such an issue, and then, and then for us, only one entrance to this big of a garage, we kind of need a second way out anyway, maybe that gets back to the Woodfin piece of it.
Maybe that's just an exit or something, you know, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, at, at, if, if you put the light further north and have the, I keep having, having the pedestrian there, you know, at least maybe a lighted, uh, flashing type crosswalk as well, as well as pavers in, in the street. I, I really like, you know, pavers in the street.
We can do pavers and, you know, make it real bumpy, so when you go through there, you got, you really want to slow down, because it hits your wheel blocks, and I know, you know, Berkeley had a lot of these intersections where they did not have a signal, they tried the flags. You guys remember the flag?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they all got stolen.
Yeah, they got stolen, and people still got hit.
People got hit by cars.
Because people were more confident with their flag, that somehow the car was going to see them waving their flag.
Car went right for them.
And the car went right through them, so.
Yeah, they were looking at the flag, they weren't looking at the person.
They were, you know, oh, look at that, and, and so, i- it's just safer people across where the vehicle has to stop. So, that will work on that, if, it's a good comment, and, you know, among us, we're, we have very vociferous arguments about how to fix this, so we'll have those arguments with the traffic engineer and the city staff, and come back to you with something that works.
Thanks. The fencing right now that's been put up along the east side of Shellmount is really effective. I mean, people are funneled to those crossing points, they don't even attempt to cross over that fencing, so there is a way to control where, where people will be moving across the street.
Do you still think we should maintain those fences? Because it feels like a real barrier to, it feeling like an open, people-friendly zone, you know?
I'd rather see planning there than the fences.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's much softer and warmer.
Okay, well, we'll come back to you, and, and you'll pick it apart, and we'll be going through this again at the merits process and all the rest of it, so.
Right.
Okay.
Then I think over at the Christie and Sixty-Fourth Street site, can you put that site plan up there? I have to agree with Joe that right now we've got a pretty blank wall along Christie, and, and frankly, most of those walls, including internal to your project there, I understand you want people to, to know there's a parking structure or access to a parking structure, but, um, there's a lot, I think, that needs to be done to show a skin that is interesting. I know on, um, the project south of Christie Park, we pushed hard, and it took a long time to get a surface to that building that was acceptable. I wouldn't say anyone was really happy with it, um, but I think some of the things that surfaced on the skin of the building included balconies, walls that opened up where you couldn't have a balcony, um, things that complemented the residential feel and the activation that you're trying to achieve, which I think is just as important on the east wall of that building, frankly, as it is along Christie, and, um...
You know, just, if I can, just interject, uh, to amplify what Jim was saying, uh, the back end of Woodfin, the, that, uh, puts on the, on the track, that is, that is very well articulated, it's very well sculptured, uh, and it really is an advantage. So, I think, you know, to add to Jim's point, absolutely.
Mary, Texas, you're going to kill me. They've been doing elevations that show a lot of articulation, and, and we weren't ready to show them to you, because we didn't understand them as developers.
Yeah, so it's. We're not getting the impression, in other words.
Right.
If I may address.
Did you bring any of those trunks?
Well, I, I don't think we're ready to show it yet.
All right. We, we understand the comment, we're working on it, and we'll, we'll bring you something.
But I'd like to respond on the sixty-fourth and Christie, just, I, I think one of the things that.
Raise that microphone up there.
One of the things that we're exploring is perhaps playing with material palette, I understand the scale, this is a massing model of view, and, and there will be more articulation. One of the things that we're trying to do is if you look around Emeryville, this is maybe just more of a discussion point, if you look around Emeryville, you see almost kind of a constant pattern of buildings that's em, emerging, you know, kind of the wood frame, you know, kind of, everything has about the same module. One of the things that would be kind of nice to get some varieties in that kind of modulation. I'm not saying we have to do a massive building to, 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 in order to co, make a contrast, but one of the things that we're exploring is perhaps using materials as a way of kind of creating a, a kind of bigger contrast in, in, in building, instead of relying on kind of every patio to have a different breakup, you know, so that's kind of the exploration, that's why we're not ready to show any of the elevations, but material is one of the palettes that we're going to.
Well, one of the things that, and, and now that we're, opened it up again, I'm, I'm going to put it in, uh, one of the things I ended up drawing on your, your, your thing here is three arcs, you know, having, if you want that much massing, then maybe curve, put some curves in or something, so that it isn't just a mass, I, it's not, it, you, you don't want, uh, you know, just a, a massive wall, whether it be glass or whatever, you want, you want something. Now, I, and I agree with Patty, you don't want, and you, that we don't want everything to look the same, but on the other hand, uh, we are trying to, the, we are trying to pedestrianize the city, right? And that, nothing is, is more daunting to a pedestrian than looking up there, like I used to do in Manhattan all the time and just break my neck. So, anyway, that's just, just a thought.
Chair Martin?
Yes.
Did I just make a comment?
Yep.
Just another suggestion, um, on, especially on the volume at the north end of the Sixty-Fourth and Christie Building, which appears to have a pretty sheer wall that goes straight up from the, from the sidewalk to the roof, perhaps there could be a step back similar to the one on Christie Avenue, but not as big. I think he said that was thirty feet. A, a step, a small step back of, you know, five or six feet even, would be, and with a cornice line at that level, would be, would help to make it feel like it was a lower volume at the street level, and then a tower that stepped back above it, and it would feel less, and I don't think that would affect their floor plans too much, they should be able to work within a, a few foot setback.
I guess the, uh, the terraces, the courtyards, I mean, those, those will all complement the experience for the people living there, and any hint that you can bring that they are there to the street level with overhanging vegetation, and vegetation that shows is going to be important. In my mind, we want the upper levels to feel like they're residential, that it's not just a box that people go into and disappear and live in, but I think it's important to try to activate as many of those levels as possible, and at least give the hint that there's residential activity there. It'll be interesting to see how your, the entrance works out, and, um, you know, I tend to pay attention to detail, not only, um, with this development, but the, on the other side as well, and I've already looked at how the retail's going to function, where is the trash going to be stored, where, where are you going to have the, the trucks that get in and serve retail? And I, right now, your retail seems problematic. They're forced either to load directly south of the building or in the parking that is needed to meet your parking requirement, and there's nowhere right now that I can see that accommodates basic function for retail use, including trash, storage, and access for, for, um, loading and unloading. And, and, uh, the Shellmount looked a little bit better before, but now you've got to flush some things out there. It's great that, that there's an effort to link all of this together, um, and the more you can carry this out to, to Christie, to Shellmount, um, to those key intersections that are really tight right now or not functioning well or aren't landscaped well, will help to improve, um, the whole project. So, it'll be exciting to see the, the next step, and I guess the next step will probably then be the public hearing. I get the sense from the commission and from the comments we heard tonight that there's been enough progress that, um, we don't need another study session unless, I didn't hear that from the rest of the commissioners.
Yeah, I, I think it's marching forward.
You have some challenges with the Shellmount building and access there, and making sure that that is going to function well and safely, um, but, um, it's great progress, so thank you.
Very nice. Good job.
Okay, that is, uh, the end of the study session items, we have...